Maybe it's started. So, Kathleen is getting the list of people that signed up to speak. They have their first item of business tonight.
In eighteen eighty-eight, James Bryce wrote that sunlight kills the germs of corruption that can infect a government. His words remain true today. The Texas Public Information Act assures that government entities give citizens access to information about what public servants are doing on their behalf. Texas government does not belong to elected officials, but to the people of Texas. Texans have the right to see how their government is spending their tax dollars and exercising the powers they have granted it. That knowledge is essential to preserving the rule of law, protecting the democratic process, and defending the liberty we all cherish. That's written by Ken Paxton in the Freedom of Information Act. In the City of Godly Code, under the city secretary, it states, "The city secretary shall be appointed by the city council, not the mayor," I added that, "and serve at the pleasure of the city council, not the mayor." The city secretary has been grossly insubordinate by not serving at the pleasure of the city council, but instead ignoring and delaying requests from a member of the city council several times for a request of information. She says that she has not complied with the law by completing her open records training. It has been twelve business days since a request has been made, and there's been no communication thus far on that issue. The city attorney has been subverting the city council, intercepting, and in the City of Godly Code, it says, under the city attorney, it says, "The municipal attorney is an appointed position and serves at the will of the city council. Therefore, intercepting or diverting requests is diversion." There's also a statement on tonight's agenda stating that they would not do the HB twenty-eight forty that wouldn't be discussion. However, HB twenty-eight forty, I just want to remind everyone, says that, "At the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Therefore, if a member of the public wants to communicate or during the discussion, they are welcome to do so and cannot be stopped during that time." Therefore, it's recommended that these interim employees, positions, these improperly hired individuals be dismissed immediately per section twenty-two point zero seven seven. It is also recommended the mayor be removed per section twenty-two point zero four two, B through B, given the mayor's responsibilities and his refusal to perform B. Twenty-two point zero four two of the local government code says, "The mayor shall at all times actively ensure that the laws and ordinances of municipality are properly carried out." B states, "The mayor shall inspect the conduct of each subordinate municipal officer and shall cause any negligence, carelessness, or any other violation of duty to be prosecuted and punished." For the city secretary to subvert a request by a city council member is reason for dismissal, and if the mayor can't carry out his duties, he should be dismissed or resigned.
Mayor, hello? So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this body tonight. I must say, I am not a resident of Godly, but Godly is very well-known throughout the metroplex because of, what some would say, kind of a Kabuki court, kangaroo court, you run your city in a very foolish manner. And I run an organization because of my ancestors. Their blood is on the wall of San Jacinto. They fought for our freedom, for our liberty. And beyond that, my ancestors died in World War I, World War II, in Korea. And for every member of this community, you have an obligation to not allow tyranny at any level. This is how you lose a state. When asked what form of government the Constitutional Convention had established for America, Benjamin Franklin famously replied, "A republic, if you can keep it." Eric Metaxas, a famous author, has spoken about, "We are on the tip of losing it." Henceforth, because of what I see, I formed an organization to educate citizens and parents on how to push up against their government and demand that we retain a representative form of government. Everything that I have seen from this city and this school district avoids representation form of government. Frankly, Mr. A.C. McGeekey, Mayor, you are an abomination to the law. Everything you have done has subverted the law, and it has been to violate the freedom and liberty and due process that ancestors have died for, and it is the only thing that distinguishes this country from other countries. That line is very thin, and when small municipalities allow it to happen at the local level, it takes virtually no time at all before that's how the state is run. So I implore each and every one of you to understand the gravity of your obligation to retain the control of the city operating as a representative form of government, a republic. In my hands, I have communication that clearly states the admission that a council member was arrested under false pretenses, bogus pretenses, with the intent to allow someone, the mayor of the city, to operate tyrannically, to have the votes that he needed to do what he wanted to do after keeping the city closed and avoided meetings for almost three months. It says, "I told him on February seventh, twenty twenty-three, the night Jennifer was arrested, Kathy Carter called me and had me crying and scared for Roger, telling me that he needed to get out of there. A.C. asked me why Roger would be arrested, and I said, 'I didn't know why Jennifer was arrested.' He said, 'A.C., they didn't plan on her being arrested at Town Hall. They were waiting for her in her house, but she didn't go straight home. She drove straight to the council meeting.' A.C. said, 'They did not go anywhere special for the warrant. It was a revolving judge.' He said the district attorney signed it." I said, "No, our burnout did not sign it." I asked him why he said on the warrant for forty-seven days. That's what Pete Wrench said at the council meeting. He said they did not, they had just got it that day. He had to keep from them from voting the way he knew they were. He is saving what's left of Old Godly. I tell you, whether you're old Godly or new Godly, it is time that you go forth and you get a petition and you demand the resignation of a tyrannical mayor who has violated law and caused fear and oppression to citizens of this community to petition their government. Until that happens, you are the lappin' stock of Texas. I hope you will stand up. I drive out here to one of the most beautiful areas of Texas that you could even come to. I know you're on the school board, and I know you disagree, but you're wrong, and you will find out you're wrong. It is a beautiful area. Save what you can. Make this the city that honors the name Godly instead of the notice of Godless.
My name is Holly Clemmons, can you all hear me okay? Okay, can you all hear me? Okay. My name is Holly Clemmons, and I'm the mom of Brady, and I live in Fort Worth. I'm a Tarrant County taxpayer, I'm a state taxpayer. And I'm here tonight to talk to you guys a little bit about your reputation as a city and then also as a school. I know you're city council, you don't have anything to do with the school, but it all goes back to your reputation. So people are fleeing Tarrant County. I have been trying to flee Tarrant County, but where do you go? Do you come out to Johnson County? Whoa, no. You're just gonna run into a completely different type of tyrannical city that is controlled. You guys are known throughout every place that I go. I do go around the state. I'm helping other parents. I talk to people all across the state, and y'all have the reputation of being unbelievably tyrannical. Your school board is literally the worst school board that I have ever, ever encountered. And your scores are tanking, you've got a bond coming, taxpayers are gonna have to pay seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars a square foot for some of your rebuildings, and you're saying that all these people are gonna come out here? No, you're not, because your city name is being absolutely drug-free mud for good reason, because of the things that you're doing. It is not that hard to be a good person, but apparently it is, because Mayor A.C., you are not being a good person. Be a good human being, be something, be somebody that people can look to, and they can want to say, "I wanna be a mayor like him." Don't you want that to be your legacy? Instead of having the legacy that you had someone thrown in jail because you wanted to vote? I just, I can't imagine that you would want people, you would want children to look up to you and that be your legacy. You have an opportunity to change that right now. You should resign immediately, and you should let somebody that wants to actually represent the taxpayers in the city take your spot. And that would go a long way with the people in this city to see you do something like that. People are fleeing. They are trying to get away from tyrannical school boards and city councils and everything that's going on in the big cities, and they're coming out here and they're thinking this is their paradise, and it's not. It's wanting to be worse than where they were at. I have been in Parker County, I have been in Tarrant County, I've come out here for your own meetings. I'm actually in Parker County School, and it's just better than in Tarrant County. They're so much easier to deal with, it's bigger. This is, this is embarrassing, and you should do something about it. You really should listen to the taxpayers, and you should resign. Thank you.
Hello? Good evening. I'm Marcy Galley, I'm from Amish over Parker County. Thank you for allowing me to speak at your meeting. This town is supposed to be run by a governing body consisting of five members on council and one mayor. The business of this town has not been governed by the council, but one person who does not possess the authority he so desperately desires to protect Old Godly. The council was not provided with documents for tonight's meeting, weren't even emailed an agenda. That's unheard of. Then that's, then that's total disorganization by staff. The resolutions, amended ordinance, and amended MOU on the SRO program. Who knows how they want to vote? All of those items should be tabled if the council did not have those deadline copies before this meeting. What's happening here is official oppression. The unilateral, the unilateral decisions to cancel the second regular meeting on February twenty-first, that was due to a conflict of the city attorney, but tonight she had another conflict, and there's another city attorney here from the same law firm. So why wasn't that regular meeting held? A lot of town business has been placed on the back burner to fit the agenda of one man. Let's highlight the lies spoken during the February seventh meeting regarding that the city had nothing at all to do with Jennifer Thompson's arrest. That was a lie. Who is ruining the town? I can tell you it's not the members of the council trying to make positive changes, like updating the employee handbook, keeping an inventory of capital assets, establishing a system of purchasing, making sure there are checks and balances to all aspects of the town's business. So that one person isn't keeping the books and approving all of the purchase orders and controlling all there is to control in the city. Yet, these council members have gotten pushed back time after time after time. The council needs to take back their authority, and I hope to see that happen tonight. Don't approve anything that you didn't receive supporting documentation on for review prior to this meeting. The council has the power to adjourn this meeting at any time. You can stand up and walk out if you disagree with what's happening, and your staff members are completely insubordinate. You need to take back your authority. The council has the power, and you should. Don't keep allowing one person to run this town any longer. I'm wearing a shirt that says corruption, collusion, and oppression. Hashtag shady A.C. I mean, it's a hashtag, resign now, also going around. You need to resign, sir. Every agenda item on February seventh that required a tiebreaker vote by the mayor, that should be voided. If the mayor wants to run this town like a monarch, you're in the wrong country. And the collusion with the nudging of you to vote on items, that has to stop as well. Do the right thing, resign, and let people actually serve that want to serve, the citizens of this city. Thank you. Also, the battery is wiped out on this thing, so, anyway, I'm gonna get right to it. I'm glad Miss Ford's not here. She is disgusting as a city attorney. I'm absolutely disgusted that she was not required to be at meetings, and yet we canceled a meeting that needed to happen in order to get this town back on track because she could not come. That absolutely is not in the bylaws. She doesn't need to be here for you guys to be able to vote on issues that are important to this community. It's time to get this community back on track. So, I'm going to go ahead and move on from that. I see that we're not posting and we're not hiring people from the City of Godly. That also should not be a thing. I have a master's in business. There's no reason why I shouldn't be able to apply for city administrator, and you're not making that opportunity available for me? Is it because I'm not a part of your voice book? Who knows? I could probably straighten up a lot of things around here, and I know you don't want to see me up there doing it. I'm very sorry for that. I keep hearing comments about old and new Godly. There is no such thing as old and new Godly. Every single day, residents of the community, they go out to Fort Worth, they go out to Weatherford, they go out to Cranberries, they have outside influences. They cannot remain the same, because we're not in an Amish community where nobody's allowed to leave, and nobody's allowed to be on social media, and nobody's allowed to be influenced by anything else that is out there. There's no such thing as old and new Godly. Godly will change every second of every single day, as its residents do too. Give over the old and new Godly. If you have traditions you want to preserve, get them on the books. I don't even know of any traditions that Old Godly has. I don't see anything like in my old town, like a fish festival, or a woolly bear festival, or something that every single year you know on this date is going to happen with the city of Godly because they've always done it. So what is the point in emphasizing an old Godly? Lastly, the thing that I want to say is, a city, as much as nobody really wants to believe it, is a business. They're run like a business, they have a code of conduct, they have staff, they have P and Ls. And every resident that comes in here and pays taxes to this business needs to look at themselves like a stakeholder in a business. This is a board of directors. We voted them as stakeholders of members of this community. There's P and L statements, there's expenses, there's bids, and if you can't operate like this is a business, you don't need to be there. Put somebody else there that can run this life of business. This is a business. We could have money left over at the end of the year that, you know, maybe our spending was great, and we could reinvest it in the community, we could get people that want to live here. And you're not doing it. If you're not capable, step down, because guess what? When businesses start to fail and stakeholders see it failing, they fire the leadership who is not capable of running the business.
Good evening, my name is Kayla Lane. A.C. unilaterally decided to cancel the city council meeting on February twenty-first without consulting the council. There were important issues to be discussed at that meeting, and there was no reason to cancel. A.C. unilaterally signed a contract and hired interim city administrator, James Priville, without council approval. This makes what? The fourth contract that A.C. has solely signed without seeking the advice of the council? I read this ordinance to you on February seventh, but I would like to remind you that according to Local Government Code Title Two Subtitle B Municipal Form of Government, Section twenty-two point oh-one-oh-E, "If a vacancy exists in any other municipal office, the mayor or acting mayor shall appoint a person to fill the vacancy, subject to confirmation by the governing body." The statute hardly reads that the mayor may appoint, not hire, and that is subject to confirmation of the council which is invoked during an open meeting. Keeping Jennifer Thompson off the ballot with no explanation other than in an email saying ineligible and no response to her attorney who notified you of her eligibility, and then refusing to provide her a copy of her own application for a place on the ballot, completely shameful. Also, she was made to open records request her own copy of her own application, which should not have been an open records request. However, you are on your twelfth business day after that open records request was submitted, and that is two days past due according to the Public Information Act. I have also heard that both David Wallace and Stephanie Hodges have been in the city offices recently. Why are non-city employees and non-elected officials allowed back in confidential offices containing confidential files? Where is the approval of city council for them to be working in there? A.C., you must follow the law. You do not have the authority to unilaterally make decisions without council approval. This tyranny must stop. I urge the council to work collaboratively and to do the right thing. Your talent is depending on you. And as for Dr. Dear, it is a shame that you refuse to respond to a citizen who has emailed you four times asking for permission to attend the city council meeting tonight that was moved to Godly High School. This is not a school-sponsored event, and he has attended every city council meeting for over a year. As I have spoken before at school board meetings, the use of criminal trespass warning letters and criminal trespasses by Godly ISD to get parents to shut up who have spoken out regarding concerns of the district is a disgrace in and of itself. You should all be ashamed.
Chip, Jess? Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Alderman Potten was had a good argument when he said on social media that with regard to the February twenty-first city council meeting, we hired a firm on February seventh, not an individual attorney, to handle the people's business. And so, her not showing up was a bit of a bad look on your part, I think, Mr. Mayor. We want to vote that the individuals that you hired would be worthy of we the people, especially given the fact that on that particular evening, you had arrested a city alderman woman based on a trumped-up charge of tampering with government documents that the district attorney has tossed aside like so much garbage. And you recognize that you have the police department to do it. Mr. Mayor, you think if you were gonna shame yourself and our community in such a way, that you would at least hire a law firm that would be with us as we lead? But that's not really your agenda, is it? Your agenda is not we the people, all of us together. Your agenda is the guilt of being died. A small group of individuals who, for whatever reason, think this young lady, all hundred-and-twenty pounds of her, is gonna grab Old Godly in her hand, stick it in her back pocket, and take it somewhere and lose it forever. How can that be true, Mr. Mayor? How can that be true? I've been around here since nineteen seventy-eight. I own a school with your boy. I lied. And I thought I know you as a conservative Republican Trump voter. But, Mr. Mayor, when was it that you switched to the dark side? When was it that you graduated from the Vladimir Putin, Xi Jinping school of local government? Yeah, you think it's funny, you do. You think it's hilarious. And that's the sad part. I thought I knew you. I had no clue who you are. Why would you do such a thing? Why would you thwart the will of the people by putting a false trumped-up charge to arrest the city alderman woman in order that you could have your employees out? This violates the basic American This violates the basic American tenets of democracy, Mr. Mayor. You become a traitor to American democracy, all because you were afraid of little hundred twenty pound, if that, Jennifer Thompson, who's going to take your old Godly and lose it somehow.
All right. Okay, so everybody get the word. We got here in late. Out of A, it's going to be good from the top of the agenda to bottom.
Can everybody hear me? I haven't heard you. I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to start with letter H of the agenda.
Motion, please, on the air.
Excuse me. This is for council discussion.
You're not allowed to speak. You're the councilman. Okay, some of you just started to make a motion. All in favor of starting with H, out of H? Hello? Okay. So, out of A, discuss and consider the possible action. For all full-time firefighter positions, we're going to create an equal pay standard qualification of TCFP, commission certification, classes ECA, DMPs, paramedic, state Texas, and minimum of class B, ground class.
Okay, so when I originally submitted this item, it did not include the ECA. At least in B is, it's, I put a lot of research in. If you look at your packets, you'll find some literature in the back of it. The majority of the places that you go to require EMT certification and your firefighter certifications. So, we'll just go through this supplement. So, we have four full-time positions for firefighter plus the chief. Our budget for that is 274,481. If you deduct the chief's salary, that budget then is a remaining balance of 212,81. Now, with the, with the salaries that we're paying now, that vacant position that we have right now, it doesn't have enough budget to pay it, therefore we cannot have it. So, if you take 212,81, which is the remaining budget, and negative this chief's salary, it is 53,020, 55, and that would be, that would equal pay four positions, which is what we agreed to, when we agreed to bring on four full-time firefighters. Not the, not the actual dollar amount, but the equal pay. So, when we voted on that, that agenda item, we stated that it would equal, State's lawyer, chief, stated that it could be an equal, equally paid position. Okay, so, if you continue on. I don't want to get into any names, but if you look, two of the four positions that are filled right now, they do have EMT certification and they've been commissioned since 1996. The third filled position was commissioned in December of '22, but it does not house EMT. I understand he's already employed and I feel like we should give him a lot of time to acquire the EMT. However, I feel like he does need to get that EMT. So, I am proposing that we require EMT firefighter certification, class B, gyrus license, and, and make equal pay of 53,020 and 55 cents across the board for all four full-time firefighters. No, I did not, but I still feel like that's...
Okay.
Hello? Um, anyone, that's such a determined to ignore something this morning, so I would assume, I'm assuming, I want to hope, thank y'all, just kind of avoid that. And I'm, as a city manager, administrator side, do agree with the ESD side of things. And so, I'm just gonna say this to save some time for you, so the whole ECA thing can really not work. And I would recommend that y'all, as a board, with under-level presidents, uh, a job description to confirm that, starting this morning, that, uh, pay for, for mental staff and EMT to the state of Texas and a basic certification of Texas fire protection. And so, that might save us time. And as far as the pay, um, I have a question. I just just came up to me this afternoon on page six. I was going to work at the fourth position. Um, I've been imposed since I've seen this as that that fourth position, that salary, had run away with previous ministry. And that was used for pay raise, I'm assuming for the fire chief. I'm sure that part was used for that.
No, it's definitely not.
Can you?
No, from what I understand, I don't, it's a lax, it's a lax agreement. But, they took those four positions, what they had built into the council. Uh, critical time for our class, one additional, as presented by ESD, if we can budget that in the next four years. From what I understand, that's more, the moment I was thinking the fourth position was used to, instead of the city bank, our salary, put ESD on it. My son.
Man, just because we're in a bigger room, I'm assuming bigger room from where you normally meet, I would recommend that anybody who's addressing the council come to the podium and use the microphone since they have a tool ready to that to be able to do. So that would be my recommendation, just to everybody.
Did everybody, everybody hear what I said? All right, anyone with your... Okay, uh, my fourth position was used for the fire chief instead of the paramedic. And the way to say.
So, you haven't initiated it or are we still sitting on it as much? Because if you would budget, there wouldn't have been enough money to pay him that pay raise if we're paying that third position eleven thousand dollars more than the other two positions. So, have we initiated that or is that something?
Uh, as far as initiation, what I was trying to bring to y'all, um, reference to pay it, was people through all three positions. And, um, it was going to be a parry alongside the police department. And, uh, let me know if this is getting off topic a little bit. But, uh, it was going to be a recommendation for a parry because these three positions are not, these three level firefighters, they're, you know, they're, they're not right out of rookie school, right into, uh, so I was going to recommend that these three positions, because they are an officer status, are parried with the police department, sergeant level. And then if the city ever in the future decides to hire more paid guys that would enter there, then that's the fifth. And so, um, I've done notes with what English may mean, what's left and all this, that to go to a parry, to go to that range for all three positions is, is good. So, and that's with, uh, fire, EMT, also, that includes.
So, would you suggest handling and editing this item from now?
If, if that's what's needed, yes. Absolutely. If no action can take, if no action can be taken or moved back to the parry company or talking about, then yes, I would agree.
Okay, so the way the item is worded and made is to create equal pay? So if there is an alternative payment arrangement that the council's considering, then it is recommended that, uh, table the item and allow the... Okay, can, can you hear me? Hello? Never accused of being quiet, so, um, in regards to number eight, the item that you're on right now, the way the item is worded, it's to take action for all full-time firefighter positions by creating equal pay. So if the council is considering another payment arrangement other than equal pay, what I'm hearing is burdened pay, um, I would recommend tabling the item, as you stated, and rewording the agenda item to allow you the discretion to go either way. So discuss the pay, payment of the fire, firefighters versus sticking yourself to one payment alternative. Um, that would allow you to further discuss that options.
What's the...
You have to hold it down and tell me. It's green. It turns red.
It's green now, okay. What is the sergeant's on the police department's pay bill?
Fifty-eight thousand, it's a change. I, I might get that, that's fifty-eight, it's a change. So, if, if y'all are willing to make this, well, I'll do, I'll present y'all the information that I have because I didn't have it in the ledger when I started last week. I just recently got it out to be able to see what the numbers are. And so, on that change, I'll, one left, which y'all will have to, to y'all before the next meeting, so we don't make that decision. But it is recommended.
Okay, I will motion to table this with the proper edits for the next agenda.
So you can also, just to clarify, you can also still discuss the other items on that?
All right.
The other requirements, uh, the commission certification, license, the ECA, EMT, paramedic. But if you choose to table, you have the discretion to do that. So there's a motion on the, on the table.
Just a discussion, I can give you a second.
You'll need to wait.
So I motion to table this item with the proper edits for the next meeting. All items.
All in favor? Motion secured. Now it looks like we should go to item B.
No, we're setting with H, so we go with that.
No, you start back and then hook up. And I think A is the initial to the bottom, so we're...
Yes, A is the initial to the bottom, B is the consideration. Discuss and consider the possible action. Our ordinance establishing a children at play sign conforming to the Texas manual of uniform traffic control devices, volumes one and two, at the intersection of Timber Creek and Saddle Ridge Drive, within corporate limits of the city of Godly, Texas. Now let everybody know where that came from, how that happened. We had a gentleman that lives on that street. He was fearful for kids' safety because of the traffic. And he wanted to reduce speed limit to twenty-two or three miles per hour, which is not allowed under that. But a sign saying children at play, slow them is perfectly fine under state law. So that was, he agreed that that would serve the purpose. So what we had to do is, uh, adopt to consider an ordinance establishing children at play sign, sign, so we can, uh,
And, and just to clarify, so state law does allow a municipality or whoever governs the roadway and, and maintains that roadway to change the established speed limit. Speed limit's established typically in urban areas at thirty and you can reduce a speed limit up to twenty to twenty miles per hour. In order to do that, there are steps you have to do by, uh, undertaking an engineering study in that, in that regard. It's my understanding, I'm not certain this is the Godly road, correct? So, um, it was recommended, I believe, uh, I'm not sure by whom, but, um, it was recommended that before that stepping taken, that the sign actually the children at play. And, and it's my understanding that it's going to be placed here, the stop sign and the speed limit sign, uh, as you're entering.
The references I was telling, we could reduce that to five miles per hour. So that's what, that was one of the reasons we came up.
You can't reduce the roadway to less than the speed limit that it's set by statute. Um, you can reduce the speed limit on a roadway. In order to do that, like I said, you have to conduct an engineering study where the actual traffic is observed on that roadway and where it's determined what the appropriate speed limit would be. And a municipality can lower that speed limit to, up to or as low as twenty miles per hour.
Remember myself was forty-five, so...
Twenty. If you imagine like a school of twenty miles per hour.
Okay, so we did not get any backup documentation to do any kind of research on? Can you explain to me, like, black and white terms, what exactly it is that you wanted to stand here? Um, just so that I have an understanding of where you're going.
The, the citizen we called wanted it reduced because of children at play. The references I was given said that we could not reduce it below twenty-five miles an hour because of state regulations. But we could put a, a slow sign, say the children at play. So that was what we wanted to do, is authorize a children at play slow sign for that script. That was the only, that's the only thing that we've had anybody ask for, whether ready or not, for us.
And so what happens if the engineering state knows?
There's no engineering study required to place a sign. The only requirement by law is that the sign conform with the uniform traffic control device that's manual. That's the manual adopted by the state that says basically all children at play, I don't know if it's saying whether it's in Godly or whether it's in Angeles. So, uh, you don't have to actually do an engineering study. That sign itself doesn't create, you know, an offense if you, if you go faster than the speed limit or going to go higher than mine or anything like that. It is just a, what's called an advisory.
Will chapter session, is it your eye from TCD?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Will chapter or section?
The manual, I'm not aware of that specific, specific section, no. Uh, the ordinance as it's drafted would require a sign to be placed in, and that. So uh I can tell you just generally, the manual does require certain height requirements for the pole. Um, these type of signs, like you've probably seen, is yellow, so that's an advisory sign. It has to be a certain, uh, made of a certain material, it has to be a certain area, so a certain size. And then it has a certain uh visual on it or or symbol on it, I believe that it's children running across the road, um, something like that. Um, I don't know the specific section, but the way the ordinance is written, it does require that uh the director of traffic control marks the intersection with the appropriate sign that's being.
So whenever I looked in that manual, I could not find a children at play sign, uh, slow signs. That's why I asked each chapter or section of the sign to research it. Who's responsible for the cost and maintenance of the sign? And do we have, do we have any of these in the useful limits? Do we have any of these signs in the main neighborhood or state street?
I guess we were doing it because somebody requested. So we would have to, no, no, that's why we had to pass an ordinance authorizing the sign to put up. And then uh.
Is there a.
Yeah, it's written.
Who's responsible for the cost and maintenance of the signs?
City would be.
How much are those signs and placement?
I don't have that number.
I don't have any.
Except the camera just recently, we had to look into what the signs were caused. If we made a sign, if we made a slow sign, we'd make a slow sign.
Well, I agree, but we also have to be in spirit of that here. So it's a eighty-dollar sign, sure, it's a two-thousand-dollar sign for placement. You don't get to judge that. It's not gonna just grow around money. Who's the director of traffic control as stated in the ordinance?
I think you have speaker.
Do we have a director of traffic control?
I suppose it would fall into the police department. And then direction of the sign would fall to other.
So ti- I was gonna say, typically your public works department is in charge of maintaining the roadways, they're in charge of maintaining the signs.
So are we gonna have any kind of protocol? Because I'm sure if we give one sign to a street, there'll be a lot more that are popping up. So are we, do we have any sort of plan as far as protocol on putting those signs in town?
What is? Uh, sure, uh, I'm Jake. Not. Um, I'm not trying to uh give people table everything, but I would recommend that we table this because there are cities with this ordinance already, there are cities out there that have the signs. And like she said, these, some of these signs are kind of global, if you will, where they're from one city to the other where they look the same. So if y'all would want to table this, let's get some literature on this, see where it is, anchor up to the policy, anchor up the quotes, and see how much does, how much does it cost, uh, to build the signs and the poles and everything. And it it would, I would assume, be a public works situation to put these where you. But uh, I can tell you how it tickles, so what I do know, there's already an ordinance that's helping uh for this very thing. So with the one, let's get some of those, we draft it, draft off that, that would sit with other, and then.
I'll make a motion to table. I'll make a motion to table this item until we have all the required information for staff and contractor, and with that information, make an informed decision.
I have a motion second, on the favor? Don't you care? Discussion regarding property development plans located at eighty-eight thirty-seven West Highway one seventy-one. And that was requested by Mark Stevens with uh bringing out a vote.
Yes, sir, can everyone hear me? Our plan is. Joshua Stevens, I have Mark as in the back, um, I live in Trophy Club, Texas, five zero four Asheville Lane, Trophy Club, Texas. We recently opened Johnson County Auto Oath here on County Road one thousand one, my company. And we're looking at a potential development, um, just across the road. We called the office and we're having a hard time getting in touch with anybody on the zoning community. So that's what brought us to the meeting, is there uh someone in the office we can call, I don't know if we have the specifics tonight, exactly what our potential plans are, what we want to know that we can talk to about potentially rezoning this property here at this time.
Perfect, see? Perfect, city hall, we have the city secretary that's done everything. And I've been down there, we've been over for a month. I'm the mayor, I'm not, I'm not city manager or city administrator, so all this stuff. Remind on someone, tell me what we can, can't do. So would you, Mark, go ahead, um, explain to us what you.
Yeah, absolutely, and we can go through the specifics at the office, but it's currently zoned agricultural, it's the thirty-seven acres behind the Sonic and Pizza Place. Um, we're potentially looking at a multi-mountain development going back there. So, you know, we can go through specifics of our plan, I don't have all the paperwork in front of me, but learn to talk potentially rezoning that, see what we can.
So just a reminder, council, for any zoning changes, uh, public hearing is required with at least fifteen days notice uh to the public and to surround, hopefully everyone can hear me, to surrounding property owners, um, as well as newspaper publication, uh, for any zoning changes.
We also require mailing out to all people, especially to.
Like I said, yes, uh, to uh properties within two hundred feet of the the property that's being rezoned. Um, as this item is on your agenda tonight, it's only for discussion, so you can hear their zoning, their plans for requesting zoning, but you can't take any actions today to to grant any zoning. Um, anything that's done by the gentleman speaking, nothing is binding, nothing you say today will be binding on the property or the development of the property. Uh, but it is on the um agenda tonight, just for.
How much do you intend on making the odds?
Well, like I said, I'd like to come by the office and walk through the plan, I just couldn't get ahold of anybody, so that's what I can't do.
The only problem with that is you will only be in the office and if we have to make that decision, um, it'd be nice to have that information as well.
Yeah, we could plan to be a very full plan to communicate with you, because I just wanted to. I wanted to come by the office and discuss the rules, regulations, everything associated with it prior to doing. So is that the next, is, and I gotta be.
So you're wanting developers, maybe city staff?
We called some of the guys, some of the. This is a big person.
Since for the last month, I've spent most of my time down there, I don't have the experience, but I know who the city engineer is, and I know what we're gonna have to go through and deal with that. And Kathleen is very well versed in the permits and the warrants and all that stuff. So we're open for eighty-five votes per hour at lunchtime, five days a week, have been for a month. As much as this may have lost people, ordinance goes down after they have done.
That would be great. Thank you, Reverend.
All right, I did. Discussion and discuss and consider for possible action, approving and amendment memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer program between the city of Godly and the Godly and Central School District, and authorizing the mayor, the head, and the sign, and the branch, on behalf of the city of Godly. And uh, y'all should have that in your book, uh, we had some input from council members, and all that, all those changes were made. There was just a couple of minor things, I think there's a paragraph.
I I for one am not comfortable on um approving this right now because since we didn't get an agenda packet, I haven't had a chance to read it and uh research, so I don't feel like we should take a moment on this today.
Before we table it, I would like to go through it and mayor, if he could specify what exact changes were made and where they're at in the government.
I believe that the the changes that were marked up by you, that. When we look at this by speed, and those changes were made, do you still have your marked up copy?
No, it's in my file.
I can speak generally to this, I didn't approve this agreement myself, um, but and revise the agreement myself, but it's my understanding that the old agreement and old contract specified that the Godly ISD would pay eighty percent of the salary. This is for a new SRO or for a student resource officer. Uh, currently, there's an existing MOU that allows uh one of the Godly police officers, I guess, or the SRO for the district. Um, and is, the city is essentially leasing out the officer to the district to perform those duties at the school. The old contract, um, uh, called for the ISD pay eighty percent of that officer's salary and for the city to pay twenty percent. Uh, the school district has agreed to pay a hundred percent of the officer's salary and to approve and allow the uh, basically by by uh paying a hundred percent of the officer's salary, then that officer would predominantly be used uh to perform those SRO, those SRO duties. Um, the agreement has been amended, and I'm sorry, I can't point to the exact section, but the agreement has been amended to allow that officer, although the ISD is paying a hundred percent of the salary, the officer will still be able to be used as backup for the Godly Police Department in events of emergency. And um, this item, as it's written, uh, allows the mayor to, uh, and the school district to enter in, and authorizes the mayor to enter into this uh memorandum of of understanding to, um, basically.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to table this item until we have all the required information from staff and contractor, and with that information, make an informed decision.
I will second that motion.
So before a um vote on the motion is taken, can I get some feedback? I think the mayor would probably need some feedback as well as what additional information was needed from staff, um, from those of you who'd like to table, so that can be brought to the.
I would like a list of all the changes. They can be put underlined, I don't think they're, they're like here.
And when you say changes, you mean from the original MOU to this?
Yes. I only have two pages, I assume it's more, there's nothing after duration. But I assume there's a third page somewhere that I cannot have. Number sixteen, it says that the Godly Police Department will be responsible for all equipment and training for the assigned SROs at Pasco and or Nazro conferences, along with travel and lodging related to those conferences. They will be the responsibility of the district. I'm not sure what schools that are SROs going to, but the city of Godly is still under the, heard that statement for any other training outside of Pasco and Nazro conferences.
So what information are you wanting?
I want a red line copy of the changes. And I want number sixteen to be changed to the district to take for all training, the DSRO, not just Pasro and Nazro. And I'm not sure where all the equipment at DSRO. Obviously, obviously, you can still drive none of our squad cars, and all the equipment comes with it. That's all I would like.
So there is a motion.
All right. Have a motion, and a second to take this out. On the favor?
Uh, there's been a request that the entire agreement be redlined, that that would be included in the packets tonight. You all can see all the changes, so at least from our office, we'll ensure to provide that, um, to the city to conclude the packets.
I believe that's not only part of the, that's the only thing, you said we're marked for change in the previous capacity. That's why that's another page, it's not included. How to be discussed and for possible action, adopting a resolution, appointing the city administrator or his deputy as the plan coordinator for the city's mission, square and chart.
Uh, just to provide a legal basis for this, uh, the plan coordinator for the retirement plan is required to be a city employee. Um, so currently, there is the mayor, administrator, city administrator, or the city secretary. Um, if it's not gonna be uh set at at. If it's not gonna be set as, as the city manager at this meeting, then it needs to be put on a future agenda item to allow another employee of the city to be named as the plan coordinator.
So we currently do not have an administrator since we changed that to the last agenda item. So can we go ahead and team this one as well?
We have an interim city administrator who is.
Amy, can we have it voted in yet?
I'm sorry?
He hasn't been voted in yet.
He is still employed as an interim city administrator and he's been appointed or, or he has got that office that's been built by the mayor pursuant to twenty eighteen, oh ten of the, of the. So he is your city administrator. Your interim city administrator.
I just wanted to make sure we were following.
And this item is for council discussion on.
Mayor, can you describe to me what exactly who will be doing on this particular assignment? No, what will the duties be as far as the assignment goes?
My name is Kathleen Ross. I am interim city secretary for the City of Godley. We have one employee works for the police department who is always four fifty seven feet tall for retirement and he's requested that somebody be employed as the planning administrator. He's requested that he can just start again and since this city administrator can take the office left, he can be employed as the planning administrator for this in order to be in that starting phase.
He currently not doing any kind of retirement right now?
No, we have a Texas municipal retirement system for all employees, but this is an additional one. Our department of students who have been at the city.
Okay, so what will the assignment be like? What are we, what are we putting in action here? Like, what is he gonna be doing?
Basically, what we'll do is the planning administrator can say, yes, I am the planning administrator and I will be assigning people to this party if they are interested in doing either program. At the job, or at this time, as I said, we only have one employee that's doing that, but it would allow for a decision.
So just to clarify, essentially, what he will be doing is acquiring all the personal data, subjecting it to the retirement plan and then giving any other information needed. Is that?
Yes, ma'am. What I do is I will gather the needed information on the form that they provide for that employee, all the employees that request him. And then I will report it on to the administrator of the, of the other plan. Of the Mission Square. Yes, ma'am.
Since Michael Mendenhall emailed me initially about this and I presented it at the last council meeting. Michael Mendenhall's the Mission Square retirement system. He asked us to adopt a resolution stating who is to be the new plan coordinator for the city's work with December. Mr. Mendenhall also asked that the form be signed by the mayor. I gave that to him on Tuesday the fourteenth. That email contained important information that maybe I can on as soon as reasonably possible, which includes a form signed by the mayor to return to Mission Square retirement along with the resume. Resolution stating who is to be the new plan coordinator. We have not been paying into that retirement system. It has been taken out of the employee's check, but we have not written the check to Mission Square. So apparently, we are delinquent on funds to that retirement system. What was your question? Maybe I can answer.
Oh, I asked him if they had any knowledge of that, if they, you know. So what, do you know how we go forward and is that, is it delinquent?
Typically, a planning administrator would take care of payments to the retirement. Retirement plan, make sure those are updated. So, and like I said, it's my understanding that the person appointed has to be the employee of the city. So the way it's written tonight, giving permission to city administrator or appointing the city administrator or is designated as that for plan coordinator. If you are contemplating another employee of the city, then you would need to bring them back to, to allow another city employee to be in that retirement program.
When was the last time we did a reconciliation on this account?
So, and I was gonna say, not of the actual plan and program, it's not on the agenda tonight. It's just appoint the city administrator, the city administrator as or his deputy.
So I can answer that. Since we adopted that plan a year and a half ago, it has never been brought to the council for any sort of statement. It's just always been paid until late last year. So. So by adopting this resolution, we are simply needing somebody to backdate those funds that the city already has in its possession into Mission Square. And going forward, if anyone wants to, not do just TMRs, they want, the four fifty seven feet plan, they can do that.
That's your question. Do you have any experience in this?
Not with the, the raw stuff, no. The TMR stuff, that's all we did. But as far as the raw, no, I don't. But I do have a question on that. Going to adopt this, is it not already been adopted previously? Because.
So the prior city administrator was the plan coordinator. But it has to be, the document gives a specific name. It doesn't say city administrator. I can forward that to you if you'd like.
Kathleen, do you have any experience in this?
Not really. I have been through parts and all. Been a bit in the current TMRs, but yeah, TMRs, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with it. Or do you basically sign people and make sure that they're paid for maybe as required?
Most of these plans do have paid work, but that sets out the requirements and duties of a plan administrator. I would assume, I haven't seen it specifically for this retirement plan. The plan's gonna have, as it's spelled now, what the plan administrator or his duties. For plan coordinator.
So we need to take action on this?
Yes, we just want to keep taking that person's funds and not giving anything to the government. He's not getting any interest off those funds to appropriate severance.
Amy, a question. Can you speak? Mr. Purple. The way it's written is the city administrator or his deputy.
Sorry? That would give the ball rolling and the money back into the account of the officer.
For a second. Reconciliation.
So you asked about the duties. It's not the day-to-day record keeping company. They provide fiduciary oversight for the plan. They're designated through official resolution and the rules do not apply to the RHS or IRA accounts, only the four fifty seven. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, appointing the city administrator or his special or designated as a plan coordinator for the city Mission Square retirement plan.
The little green button. So I will second that.
All in favor? I'm curious. I'm curious. I have a matter. Discuss and consider for possible action, giving permission to the city administrator to have an additional personnel to fill for the vice.
At the current, there were several vacancies, being police chief, public works director, public works employee, and whether it fire, the public works director, was a regular public works worker, repeating fireworks. And a possible fire position in, but there will be more positions in. And then it was brought to light to me that there was a part-time. Officer in, in city hall. Okay. I couldn't find that picture while I was asking that. So, so yes, those positions need to be filled and obviously it's recommended they get filled immediately. So, but with that, I want to, I don't know if this will be up on the night and night, but that part-time position, I'm going to recommend that becomes a full-time position with, in the area of finances. And reason being, city's growing every day, money's growing every day. The city administrator should not be the sole person.
So our ordinance states that our city secretary acts as treasurer as well?
Yes.
So that.
I said city administrator, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so she actually would be taking care of the majority of the finances already. Eventually, it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to see that extra position as an HR professional.
Okay. Okay, sure. So.
And the way, the way it is posted is for current vacancies. So any offices that are already established but are currently vacant because no one has.
The current budgeted companies is the public works director, public works worker, police chief, same to be part of it. I have job descriptions. They are related to the City of Godley. Some of it came off the TMI. These aren't budgeted positions already, so we don't have to be going out for how much are we gonna pay these people, etc. So these are just street references. So the job descriptions are here. I don't know if y'all need to see those prior or if you don't wanna see those prior, before we start opening this up on TMI on our city website. So, but those are the vacant positions that you need to fill.
So do we not have a public works right now or?
We have one public works worker.
Okay.
Yes, we have one.
Okay.
And so, but he is not licensed or certified to perform the directions.
I thought he was working to get that.
He's taking classes, working towards, there are steps. He can't just immediately.
Right.
Get that, the big step, but he is working toward that. He is currently enrolled in any classes. And, oh, one more thing. The, I want y'all to remind y'all of this, just in case I didn't know, going to those positions. One of the public works technicians is paid half through TAPB and half through SCL. We have two technicians in public works. You have a public works director and then you have two technicians. One of the technicians, I don't know if this is Hunter or not, but one of the technicians is paid, half the salary comes from general fund salaries and half of the slums of salary comes from the TAPB salaries. So part of that salary is not, is not out of work salaries.
You are speaking about the vacant positions. Are you qualifying the interim as vacant for full-time? Or are you qualifying them as already assumed?
No, we full-time positions.
Okay, so, so you're.
I think what she's asking is your position, Kathleen's position, we're gonna advertise those as well.
Okay, yes, I'm bad. Yes, yes. I actually was gonna talk about that earlier, but yes, it's all absolutely.
So typically, the council is, the council's responsibility is to appoint officials like, like Kathleen's position, city attorney position, city administrator. That's the council's purview. All the other positions typically fall under the city administrator's purview. So it's important to remember when you're looking at positions like this, to keep in mind the separation of powers, that you as a council are the legislative body. When you have a city administrator in place, that person is quote-unquote the executive. And it's their purview to make those hiring decisions regarding those offices that are vacant or those positions that are vacant that aren't considered official, city official positions of this exception.
And also, the police department has vacancies. The police department has vacancies. And, but yes, so I will, I will give these job descriptions to y'all. And, and to correct that one on the flyer is. And then I would recommend come April. Mid, this is, come September, fall through this mid-year. Do that part of positions. Whatever it is in there. So, but the money's there. It's just wanted to be.
I think the.
I just. Before we vote on this and give you information, I wanna know exactly what position we're talking about. It seems like you've thought about it a couple of years. You're sitting here, oh, we're gonna might wanna do this. On the list of everybody, every current position, where you're gonna get it out from. Just a little bit more information. Doesn't seem this to not be done with it like a, I say, looks like I have more information on who you're looking for. I say, looks like I've more information on who you're looking for?
Yes, right.
And exactly everybody there, have you, I don't want to sit there, I want to complete this, who you plan on hiring, not who you plan on hiring, but what you plan on hiring for?
Yes, that's what I'm
How long you plan on hiring for, make sure we agree with it? And, and salaries?
Yes. The salary's already there, but I'll add those in. I think, yeah, I'll add those in, so y'all can see what they are. But yes, that's already been approved, left and stuff there. But I'll add it in with positions, but yes, I will forward it to you.
Probably you want to sit down with me tomorrow morning. Back in December and January, we went through these three heavily to decide what we wanted. I'd like to compare yours to what we asked for.
I believe all this has been discussed before, but just never acted upon.
Did the council take action in December or January regarding its involvement in hiring? What actions taken?
AC and myself, we're going to bring back to the council the top three or five candidates. It's going to take approximately two months to go through the entire process. We decided what We decided what we wanted them to have, what we thought they should, the base pay would be. It was just never acted upon because we didn't have a city email for them to send it to, to put on the brochure, and we don't have access to the city website or to post those jobs. Only the motion to table this item, so we have all the required information from staff and under review and information making form of decision.
I'll second that.
Most curious? Most curious? Most curious?
Can we?
Then, I believe we're going to
Item K falls under this very same category that we were just talking about, so. Item K
Item K, all of them, I don't have Since they're basically the same subject, they're related.
Slightly different, because the, as if the chief of police, all of these the chief of police and the court clerk, all of these are considered city officials. Mr. Johnson, this is your item, so do you have a discussion around item K?
My question is, would that fall under, would that fall under F as well? Under the information unofficially of F, I think it's same.
Yeah, this is a separate agenda item, and just so that, for those who don't have a copy of the agenda, item K is discussed and considered the already approved job listing being posted, including not limited to chief of police, city attorney, city administrator, city secretary, and court clerk. So this item is not to discuss, the way it's worded, it's not to discuss it's to discuss already approved job listings, so your discussion is in regards to the job listings that are already approved.
Right, I just wanted to put it on the agenda, so if we can talk about getting it into that action. It's stat, it's stat for a very long time, and those positions filled, so I would say that it does fall under the same categories, but we're just slightly different.
Well, this is different, because it's not the city administrator's purview to, to fill these, it's yours. So, except for the court clerk and the chief of police, the others, the city attorney, city administrator, city secretary, again, those are all considered city officials in the statute. So that's under the council's purview too.
Then, Mayor, what is the status of the email address that we need to set up in order to get these posted?
No, we're on K.
So what is the status of the email address that we need in order to get these posted? It's been under it for quite a long time.
The initial, the initial email address?
Yes, Michael Hattenputz has actually emailed you on occasions, asking you the status, and we have not been able to get a straight answer. So I'm just asking, what is the status of the email address and the access to the website in order to get these posted? That is all that we're waiting on. In December, you and Michael were assigned this assignment in order to get these posted, and it still hasn't happened.
All right, I'll go shop now.
Michael, would you mind refreshing his memory?
What email address we're talking about?
I asked for a recruitment, I thought that TX.gov be created so that way it was not tied to a single person, just in case we have the same issue that we're currently having now, where if a person leaves, we don't have access to their account. So then we could not have any of the resumes. Ms. Rice informed me that I could have them sent to her email address, and that solves the email problem potentially. We still need a recruitment or generalized mailbox. Who's Whoever email we use, that person will have to go to TMI instead of an account. So that way they can post, and then they'll have to go to Indeed instead of an account. So that way they can post, they'll have to go everywhere instead of an account.
Yes, so we do want a global email address, that way it's not going to one person. Because this is the issue that we're having, is that it was with one person, that person walked out. We had no notification that they were going to resign. And, but he failed to mention to council until after they were already gone. So, there was no communication, that we could get any sort of passwords. We don't even know if they turned in their keys yet, or then deactivated from the system. Essentially, we want it global, that way it prevents any of these things happening in the future. Now that you are aware of it, can you give me a timeline as far as when you can get these things completed?
So, so as I said before, it is the city administrator's purview to fill those positions that are vacant, that are open, and in terms of the ones that you have listed on this agenda item, chief of police, court clerk, it's the city administrator's purview. What, what I would recommend is that the city administrator's email be used for those. But in terms of the city attorney, city administrator, city secretary, again, those are all city official positions, that is the council's purview to appoint someone to those positions.
The council hires and fires members
Mayor, you are out of
You're out of
You are out of the twenty forty sets, that a person can comment here. Go ahead.
Why is it the police chief, under the city administrator? Why is that the law? Is that just the way it's normally done? What makes it the administrator's, uh, probability?
That is typically, under the city administrator's purview, absent some other direction or some other organs or resolution in place, that says the city council gets to choose and fill every vacancy. I, as your city attorney, we're not aware of any resolution or, or organs that state that.
Does anyone already say we can't?
I'm sorry?
May, I may not be the one that says we do it, but as the one that says we can't do it. I mean, we could have already, we had pretty well about a police chief.
As a type A general law, as a type A general law city, you are bound by the statutes that are passed by the legislature, and by your organs, etc., in place. So, it, just because it's not there doesn't mean you can do it. You are bound by the laws that are there.
So, right.
If it's not there, that means you cannot do it.
State statute sets out which positions are city officials, and that's who we Yes.
If not, all I've heard is, you normally do it this way, I haven't really said, well, this is the way I have.
Yeah, there's a statute that establishes certain offices as city officials. They're considered city officials, the law sets forth that the city council appoints those officials in the amendment of vacancy, as it's been stated before, the law states that the mayor may fill those, those vacancies with the approval.
So, Michelle, I have something else I would like to meet with Rivel in the morning, and go over what we have already decided, and what we use for the current ones. If Ms. Rice has set up a global mailbox, and all the resumes we sent to that, like we originally talked about, the city administrator would have access to that, we would not, he would present those resumes to us. Police department would go through and do all the background checks. Rivel, is that okay, Ms. Yen?
Uh, no, no, I mean, obviously, yes, but I need some further discussion because
I can bring it to you in the morning.
Do I believe those are the ones that Cass Calaway took with them, and Jessica wasn't on that meeting?
I still have them on my computer, I can send it to you as well.
So can we get the ones that the council are liable for posted this week?
It, it, you said Jessica Calaway might have had them, who's your former city attorney, correct? If those job descriptions haven't been reviewed by our office, I would recommend that those job descriptions that you have also be reviewed by our office, to make sure that they have all the requirements that are set for us, and to, for those positions, again, they're considered city officials.
So I can even, Rivel, we can go over it, both say okay to them, since the council's already said okay to our side, and then you can send it over to the attorney.
It's not really posted for any action, but I think that Mr. Rivel and our office have received enough direction that we know where to go.
So did we end up addressing the differences between that and item K?
We are on I think you're talking about item
G?
G. Oh, no, we, we haven't called G. The, the item that we just discussed was prior to this That, thank you. So, I would recommend calling one item at a time, because they're all worded differently, and they all are worded differently to allow either discussion or action. The item that you were just discussing is item K in regards to specific positions discussed and considered already approved job listing being posted. So it's my understanding, this is for the council's discussion, how you would like to see those job listings to be posted, for those specific, specific items. I'm making assumptions that this is not an item that we reviewed or discussed prior to today's meeting.
All that has been set forth in a previous meeting, it's just our city attorney did not relay that information. Where where they're to be posted is listed there, what job description is, everything is done. We just cannot have the emails or the access. So, Rivel, I'll get with you in the morning. You can, we can go over it, you can send it over to the attorney, and post it. Item K is not an action item, it's just discussion.
Item G, discuss and consider for possible action, approval to hire one police officer. Background check is done.
This is Kevin Jones, he's currently a key police officer. He grew up here, he graduated from here, he's a guy who's always got arrested. He saw a hiring flyer, and also the assistance of official backboos here, the encouragement implied. Uh, he's been a cop for about three and a half years.
Various certifications.
So he's a basic police officer, TCIC, NCIC certified, Caser certified, Michael certified, everything puts up in certification.
And he's just going to do patrol, or what's your idea for him?
Patrol, usually, if this, if they go through this, this will put us two officers on the mission. So we'll have two officers on the line, plus the hitch trucker.
Is currently doing any overtime hours right now?
A few, there, of course, we're counting, we, we have a late call, offense day over completed. So, this will help us put that in.
I was just wondering, police officer's been doubling twice, once a year, once a year and a half, it looks like, a couple of months in Alaska, why, before you jump around so much, how, how do we know you're not going to jump around most?
How, how do we know you're not gonna jump around a lot?
So, this is my hometown, my first graduation. The police got handed a lot here. For some reason, most of them are here. And this is my chance to go back.
But why you jump, okay, that's fine, but I come here, but why you jump around so much?
Uh, work places and do work out.
What defines what works for you? What are you looking for?
Places, places that secure you, provide you with water to go in, water to act with.
Do you plan on growing or are you staying in just being a patrol?
I would like to literally make my way to C I D, my projects, K nine. Go that way, I'd like to grow here and then go back.
Uh, she's controlled, this one's for you. Um, when you said that you've done a background check, what kind of background check did you actually do?
So we have, for T col, we have the contact data agency. They ask if T col's secure shared. Uh, so we sent a, a release form to them. They sent, they sent, uh, us, we have calls and references. I keep it on there. Did the promo check on. Everything, everything turned out good. Uh, I talked to the Dublin chief, chief Ray. East Coast Bay Island, Mr. Jones. That being said, that you really hired him. You know, the chief that generally reaches a tasker. Reach out to him, reach out to us. Well, he's on the network too. But the uh, T B B, working right now, also.
You weren't fired from any place or anything? You left an animal doing honorable, honorable discharge, very similar.
Um, so you've gotten the honorable discharge. Did you have any uh, pre-prints on file? You did. What was that for?
So I've been, been doing progression.
Uh, like a police field? And was there a situation with that or was it just a pure accident?
It was just a pure accident. Just driving, not long out of town, not long out of S U. Just dropped through the neighborhood, turned on the street. Another people turned up in front of me. Maybe it was a collision.
To say asking two hundred questions. Do you have this F five maybe that we can get?
Not on the, but more technical.
Is there a record that follows an department to department?
Are you asking, all is a part of department, part of this. Does each agency leave a seven five?
The personnel file that contains all the F fives.
So each one is.
Whether that is considered public or not, it kind of depend on each department and whether there's civil service. So um, civil service departments are gonna have public personnel files force them even to either department to request them. Um, F fives generally are not considered public. But as you stated, the F five alone is a document that, it is a, it's a T col document that basically says how that person uh, likes that.
So I don't mind adding another police um, position. However, again, since we didn't get any backup um, in work, I don't know that, that I wanna move forward in this item. Um, I'd like to move the table list to the next meeting with more um, backup document, if you'll.
There's a motion on the table. So, there's the.
There's a motion, there's a second, title is silent. Congratulations.
I can add that question, all the motions being made, I'm not gonna give it for a vote.
I think if there's a motion, I think if there's a motion.
That's right. There's a motion that's seconded based on the table, this item's in the next meeting. So if there's discussion about the motion, we can discuss.
What's the title? All in favor? What's the period?
So that's before twenty zero.
Kiro, can you have that higher meeting on the third week?
Okay, I'm, I got it, I got it.
No, that's not so good. I do have a question for you. From the last time we hired somebody. How thorough is the background? They have been, emails sent to me for me, I wanna know that.
It was actually there, girl? Uh, in city of Brooklyn, there was court disquisition.
What happened?
He had, he went to court. He had court dispositions, I saw it. Of course, the judge ruled in his favor saying his last agent failed to provide proper, proper cause to get him a discharge or discharge, actually determined he was an overturned. An honorable, he actually made his, what they accused him of.
So this item's been tabled for discussion or action in the next meeting. So we need to. And just a reminder, um, emails can be in discussion amongst a group of you, a quorum of the council members, can be considered a meeting. So if you have discussion amongst a quorum in an email setting, that can be considered a meeting. If that meeting is not posted, that's a violation of the open meeting. So uh, I would advise you in terms of having email discussions about any uh, police officer positions or any items that have been tabled, uh, keep that in mind that that's a violation of the open meeting act and for in an email setting.
I'm not. Discuss to address the problem of voting quarters that took place with I C M E E, Jan Wyden, and Mary Ann Matthews on the dais during February seventh, twenty twenty-three, record called Council meeting.
So uh, before this item is addressed, I wanted to address one thing uh, in terms of legal requirements. Uh, this item was requested to be posted by a council member. Uh, voting coercion is not considered official city business. That is under the appropriate purview or is appropriate for city council discussion. And the reason being is that voting coercion, if it did or did not occur, is a criminal act under the election code and under the statutes. Um, so this item is for discussion only. Uh, but I want to advise you that as a council. As a council, um, it is not your purview to take any action in regards to criminal acts. Uh, again, I would remind you of the separation of powers. Criminal investigations are up to the police department. They're not up to the city council. Um, so I, I would advise you in terms of that, that this is a discussion only item. Um, and again, that criminal act matters are not for council action or authority or jurisdiction. Uh, those again, fall under the authority and jurisdiction of the police departments or any other law enforcement.
Uh, I guess I just have one question. Um, what was the purpose of tapping Jan and Mary Ann during the meeting on February seventh, twenty twenty-three?
I lost my eyes. I can't, I can't say. You know, we, we don't have a county meeting. Or I don't have a lot of stuff to be, I don't see.
She says that I have to.
So I would also advise, while I'm not, I'm not an advisor for you and in, any of you, an individual. I got pretty bad. Okay, well, I'm not, uh, I'm a city attorney. I'm not an attorney for any of you. You need to be aware that in the statements you made, like I said, this is a criminal act, uh, a criminal violation. Voting coercion is considered a criminal violation. So um, any statements that you make here can be used against you in court of law. Um, I would advise you about that. Um, like I said, this is a criminal act or a criminal violation that's being alleged. And that is not the purview of the city council. So this is your item.
I asked a question. Um, so are you, are you gonna, like, not, you're great or? I'm talking to the mayor.
So one thing I could recommend, like I said, whether it's voting coercion or not, that's criminal, criminal act. That's for the law enforcement to decide. Uh, but what some councils do, I don't know, you guys haven't adopted any kind of.
Why can't you go on please?
So like I said, um, criminal act, it's for the police department and for law enforcement to determine whether a criminal act has taken place and someone is, is, uh, has probable cause that a criminal act has taken place. Uh, what I would recommend is what a lot of cities do, and I know you all haven't adopted a certain policy in taking a vote. Um, just to not have seen y'all kind of raise your hands all together. There's a question, who's voting for what? What, what some cities do. What some cities do is they take a roll call vote. Um, and what that means is that the mayor, once a motion has been. Once a motion has been made and a motion has been seconded, the mayor would then call for a roll call. And typically, that's done by the city secretary, where the city secretary would call the name of each council member voting to ask for their vote, yay or nay, or what they were stating. Uh, that way, there's no question about whether someone is being prompted to vote a certain way. It makes it clear on the record how each of you are voting in a particular item. Um, whether you're gonna adopt that procedure or not, that uh, that is not on, for consideration is decided. But that is a way that uh, many councils can you'll uh, take the actual register vote of each council.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask. Anybody else?
All right, on a day. Discuss and consider for possible action. An external forensic audit by a third party on all city of Godly financials, city of Godly police department, city of Godly corporate. The message of this was uh, somewhat over forty thousand dollars.
No, it was seventeen thousand five hundred and two twenty thousand.
That was their talk.
So seventeen thousand five hundred to twenty would be the first scope of work.
We will not. Oh. So we will not be able to move to phase two until after phase one is complete. Therefore, they can't give us a second amount until after this phase is done. We don't know how.
May I ask, may I ask a question before this?
Shoot.
Um, that wasn't a question. That was one question. I have two questions. Um, was this, um, these services sought pursuant to an R F Q or a request for qualifications that was uh, posted to the public?
We hear it, Doc, they don't believe in us.
I'm sorry?
We hear it, Doc, they don't believe in us.
Well, I'm here to tell you different than should it is.
Oh, I agree.
So uh, say, uh, do you have an answer to that?
Well, I just try, okay, so I have a, it's uh, I have a list of times that I've had this on the agenda. Uh, the first time, we had um, David Wallace resigned, so we had to. The second time, um, Jessica Hill resigned. Cass Calaway was the owner there, we had to. The third time, I was jailed. The fourth time, we canceled the meeting and now I'm here.
Okay, so. Um, the reason I ask, um, this is not an item that at least our office has, has seen. Uh, we have not seen, I, I was handed a document today with a cover letter for forensic audit services, which looks like it's an agreement. Our office hasn't, our office hasn't reviewed this agreement or the proposal. Um, I need to advise you that for these type of financial auditing services, state law actually requires you to put out an R F Q or a request for qualifications. Request for qualifications basically is a call out to the public saying, please, city of Godly are requesting audit, financial auditing services. And it lays out a scope of services of what exactly you are seeking in terms of your financial audit. Um, what the law, and, sorry, get to that spot. What the law requires is that the city cannot select or enter into an agreement with a financial auditor until it has submitted a, or put out an R F Q so that it can make that determination based on the demonstrated competence and qualifications of the person and uh, considers the fit that the person has fair and reasonable prices. And that's in government code twenty three, four oh oh three. Uh, so the way this item is written now, and, and what, what that section goes on to say is that if you don't follow that process for hiring this type of professional services, any agreement that you enter into can be void. any agreement that you enter into can be void. Uh, so that means no good. Uh, in terms of this, this item, the way it's worded, uh, states that it's to consider a specific, to engage a specific person or a specific firm, I'm assuming a department here. Uh, before you do that and before you take action on that, you will need to submit an RFQ for the public's consideration. Or RFQs.
And we do have, oh, let's move.
What's she talking about?
Go ahead.
And we do have audits performed every year.
Is it just totally different from the science?
So I don't know, I, I have no idea about this item, it wasn't for, for office records.
And this is actually just a scope, it's not any sort of agreement, it's just a scope to say, hey, here's what's in phase one. So is there any other questions, if not, I'd like to place a motion. Okay, so I have a motion to approve a forensic audit and direct staff to create a post, uh, a proper RFQ in the local...
So the item as it's worded is about, uh... The way the item is worded is for possible action on an external forensic audit by a third party, specifically Allen Nelson, on all City of Godly financial, City of Godly choose parties, of gossip for reference. Uh, the way it's worded would only allow you to take action to hire that specific third party. If you are requesting a future agenda item, you can request a future agenda item to consider placing or consider, uh, posting an RFQ for the service.
Okay, so...
I, uh, submitted this item multiple times, um, I haven't even asked for the whole board to respond to me and inform me the proper way to verbiage this. I've gotten zero response. Half of my items were submitted, they were not included, I asked illegal issues.
Do you have a question about this?
Yes, how do I word it in order to get that correct?
That's something that our office could talk to you about, but like I said, you can request a future agenda item for the city to publish a RFQ to conduct an external forensic audit by a third party. And not name a specific third party, which would allow, which would allow that audit to break like that much.
Okay, so then I will read out my question and ask the question that I have to see the rights.
Whenever you say that agenda item, are you talking about giving direction to city staff or the city administrator to put out an RFQ? Okay. Pearl, have you dealt with RFQs before?
Item L, discuss and consider for possible action the finding of city council members Jan Whitehead, Mary Ann Matthews, and Mayor AC McGee. Honorable team. Honorable team. The two special call meetings. Date December... Date December twenty seven, twenty twenty-two, and January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item L, discuss and consider for possible action the finding of city council members Jan Whitehead and Mary Ann Matthews and Mayor AC McGee for not attending the two scheduled... The two scheduled special meetings, dated December twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, and January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. LGC Chapter twenty-two, Section twenty-two point zero three eight.
So that fine is actually three dollars per meeting, um, so that would be six dollars apiece. Um, and I motion that we fine you, you, uh, Mary Ann.
Okay, and before they... Before a motion is... Before a motion is made on that, there needs to be discussion about what the law requires. Um, the law says that a council member can be fined an amount of three dollars maximum. Only, and, and only if they miss a council, uh, scheduled council meeting. Um, the only excuse for missing a council meeting is, uh, a permitted excuse is because of illness of the council member or alderman or a family member or illness. So before you, before you actually vote to fine someone, you have to make a finding if that person was sick or if their family members were sick. Without that finding, you're finding without any due process. For a regular meeting or a special call meeting?
Any meeting. Any meeting. So, um, would you guys inform us why you missed those two meetings?
I called and informed for the second meeting that I missed, that I had a family member in Bossy County that was having a crisis and, uh... I drove down there and, uh... Did what we could to help out, and therefore I could not come to the meeting, and I called him, I forget who I called, I told him I wouldn't be there. I did notify.
I was with faintly those times, how can I faintly? So like I said, unless, unless there is evidence that you have that they missed... They missed, because you have to have evidence that there was not an illness of the alderman or the alderman's family. It's a fine.
Okay, so can I motion to table this item until I get more information, um, I have to talk to the line of...
Is that your question?
Yeah.
Sarah, thanks.
Rev, sir.
Are you ready to pass this, uh, this is a debate?
Michael, excellent, right to ten, pardon. All in favor of approving this? Motion secured.
I need, uh, we need your votes again, because we have two that didn't vote ahead.
Extent extension or no? So, all of them no?
Okay, so we got...
True, no exceptions. Item M, discuss and consider possible action, approving the pledge of allegiance before every council meeting.
Is there any want to post of this? I think it's really some explanatory, um, generally in the agendas, this is usually one of the items that does happen. Um, so I'd like to go ahead and make it part of our, our agenda as well.
Okay, nobody's discussing. I make a motion approving of cycle of the pledge of allegiance, this should be done after calling the meeting, the order of, or any presentations of public comment.
I second that motion.
Do you read your motion, Michael, I couldn't understand all of it.
Make a motion approving the recycle of the pledge of allegiance, this should be done after the calling, after calling the meeting to order, but before any presentations or public comment.
Okay. Everybody understanding? All in favor? Can you oppose? Motion secured. And that is our school justice. He is discussing the possible action for additional custody requirements to the official meeting agenda and sort of publish in the next...
Is there any legal discussion about this?
Barrett? Okay, um... This is Councilmember Thompson's item, but I, it's, I need to advise you what the law states about requirements for posting the meeting agenda. Uh, while this item is listed for discussion and possible action, I would advise that the council can't take any action in regards to this because the Open Meetings Act is clear about the requirements for posting a, an official agenda for the city council meeting. So the legal requirements for... The legal requirements for a, and sorry if I'm yelling, this is coming in and out. The legal requirements for, uh, an official posted council agenda is that the agenda has to give the public sufficient information to surprise the public of the subjects that are going to be discussed at the meeting. Uh, the official, uh, city council agenda is supposed, has to be posted no less than seventy-two hours before the act will be. Uh, that, uh, there are exceptions to that seventy-two hour posting only for emergency matters or public necessity. So, uh, like I said, except for those exceptions, uh, for emergency meetings for public necessity and those emergency meetings and public thinking. Emergency meetings and public necessity, uh, the Open Meetings Act sets forward what those requirements are to meet those emergency meetings. That is essentially acts of God, things like riots, epidemics, or pandemics, uh, power failures, uh, those type of actions that are out of the control of when a meeting's going to be called, uh, those are the type of things that the statute sets forth that you could post a notice of that meeting less than one hour. So unless, unless it's an emergency, one of those enumerated emergencies, you do have to post a notice seventy-two hours in advance of each meeting, and it has to be posted in several places. So it has to be posted in a place that's readily available to the public. Um, I understand that you all post your agendas, uh, the readily available agenda is posted at City Hall, which is where it's required to be posted. Um, the law says that if... Is that, uh, is that case of it is outside City Hall or outside? So the other issue is confirmation. Okay, so also if you as a city have a, uh, city website, you're required to post there. So you're required to post same agenda on the city website. Um, that's not anywhere on the web, that doesn't count, uh, for individual Facebook pages or other pages associated with the city, the police department's page. It has to be posted on the city's website, um, and Kathy has posted, actually posted today's, um, meeting agenda. Yes, just one moment, I have a little bit more to add, okay? Um, so if you make a good fake attempt to post it on the city agenda, but it doesn't get posted because of a technical issue, so because your internet went out or because there's a technical issue with the website, that doesn't preclude you from having a meeting. As long as that permission for posting on the website is for technical.
On our website, we have the full pages. Also, in the past, we've had all this other one on the agenda too, on the website. We'll make sure that continues to get there, we have to have a motion for our next meeting for that. Like, we had all these documents. I know state documents, but we had it, we're all going to continue to have it.
Again, as a city attorney, I will tell you that the law requires that the agenda be posted, it's not required that it's...
I understand, I don't, I'm not worried about, I understand the law says this, but, uh, if people that are interested in this need to see everything they come from here and talk about. Plus, I'm not going to get a packet anymore, I need it so I can see what the heck's going on.
Well, that, that issue is not for discussion right now, but, but what the law requires in terms of posting is that your agenda be posted on the... And, and I would point out, I'm sorry.
Can I add that to the next meeting, that we post this on the website, all the, all the available information for the meeting? And get done on the website tonight?
So that would, I mean, that's up to y'all to discuss, but again, that's not off on the agenda tonight.
I know, I'll go on next time.
So...
Thank you.
Uh, one of the things is that some, these items have to be requested in time, be put on the agenda to give the public seventy-two hours notice. These packets, I mean, several of these items were provided to our office, at least, I got two things today. So they can't be posted on time, I mean, they're not required to be posted online, uh, but if you're asking for these to be posted, they need to be posted at the same time as the agenda.
I agree, we've had several issues with that with our contractors and developers going in town, posting the last minute, but we've been able to practice for them. So we've asked for everything to be in the City Hall by Wednesday, before it's ever gets started.
But the law, but like I said, the law doesn't require you to post a packet, a lot of times there are items, sometimes there are zoning requests or different items that, you know, contract negotiations are ongoing up until the day of council, so sometimes items can't be posted or the actual packet can't be, that's interesting. Uh, what the law requires is that the agenda is posted.
I do what the law requires. We, we do a crap for our...
Can you see the retention of that, as far as keeping it on the website, um, like posting it on the website, how long does it have to stay there?
It has to be continuously posted both, both on the website and in the, um, the publicly available spot. Um, City Hall, it has to be continuously posted for seventy-two hours. But like I said, if there's a technicality for at least the website, what the law provides is that if there's a technical issue and your website posting isn't continuously posted for that time, uh, that doesn't mean that you can't have a meeting, and one of the reasons for that post is that techni, is a technical issue.
So after that seventy-two hours, um, is it... is it eligible to be deleted, or does it need to stay there on the website?
Well, an official, it's not required to remain on the website. Most cities do put it on their website after the meeting has been held. That was the question.
Correct.
Yeah, most cities, yeah.
Well, is that a bad to look at other agendas if they had already been deleted off the website?
And that's just the review of how many can you post that's up to your website? Whether, you know, some cities only post their immediate agendas, some... I didn't realize I was not amplified. Some keep a backlog for up to five years, some keep up to ten years. So there's no requirement for the backlog. What it is required is to be posted in advance of the meeting. Once an official agenda is posted, both on the city's bulletin board or the case, as well as online, it's considered an official document. So there are retention schedules that are adopted by the state library and Kathleen knows about those retention schedules where those agendas are required to be maintained by...
On the February seventh... On the February seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, did we have any issues with our internet? Or whether? If not, why was the meeting not posted to the website?
The reason why was that particular time, I did not know who the contact was to get it posted on the website. That was actually my first day.
Who was in charge prior to her coming in as far as posting it on the website?
I don't know. I'm just bored of y'all. Either design, or try after highway, or I don't know. So I don't know. I can see y'all posted a month and a half. Probably over a month now. Understood.
And who posted it to the bulletin board?
So I'm not certain about your questions, but that kind of goes up the scope of your item as you posted it. You've asked to just talk about posting requirements of the official agenda, not specific ones.
So where would you like it posted?
I was just getting a confirmation that we were going to start putting it on the website since those were not being put on there. I just want to insist.
So the website and the bulletin board on the column out front is the only place you wanted?
That's the recommendation from our office, the only places that should be posted. Those are the only places that are required to be posted. You run into a problem if they're in other locations, they're not secure, and those agendas can't be changed. The official posted agenda that's posted by the city secretary is considered the official agenda for the city council meeting that is being posted.
Next item. Item O, discuss and consider for possible action, past and future hiring procedures for all employees of the city of God.
Do you have it requested by?
No.
So on that note, we should probably put the meeting staff for the other items.
Hi, Beth.
I think we already kind of discussed this. Privileg, I'll give the privilege in the line, we'll give the attorney, and we'll start posting for hiring. I mean, it's HR's pretty specifically how you can hire new employees.
So my next number is five.
I mean, let's all want special hiring procedures.
Item P, discuss and consider for possible action, city council rules of procedure.
So it's my opinion that this item, I'm not sure who requested it, but many city councils adopt rules of procedure to address issues that come up at meetings. And that's to address decorum and how the meetings are run. So I've drafted an ordinance, and again, this is just a basic ordinance that includes things that make the meetings run smoothly. So designating a time and location for meetings, procedures for placing items on the agenda, who has the authority to place, remove items on the agenda, compelling city council attendance and when a council member is considered absent, and how to handle those absences. The duties of the presiding officer, which is the mayor, and the mayor pro temp. And mayor pro temp serves only in the absence of the presiding officer in other circumstances that are set out in state law. I've included as well rules of conduct. Rules of conduct essentially lay out the conduct of council members as well as attendees of the city council meetings. And the purpose of these rules is typically to make sure that the council meetings are running smoothly and so that the business of the council is being attended to without disruption, without impeding that sort of thing. This is just a draft for y'all's review and for you to consider. It's by no, you know, by no means a final document, so any feedback you might have in terms of that. But we do recommend, our office does recommend adopting these type of rules so that you can have council meetings that run smoothly, like I said, so that roles and responsibilities are set forth. The way I drafted this is unless, if it's a certain authority or role that is set forth in the state statute, that's just mirrored here in these rules of procedure. The state statute allows you as a council to adopt the rules for your own conduct and rules or procedure for the city council meetings. So if you all haven't had a chance to review this, I would encourage you to review it. Like I said, this is just a draft document for you to start with.
We've been talking about this for six months. I would say we need to table this since we did not have this draft document until six thirty tonight. Y'all all received it, you know, that four to six different variations from other cities that we've been drafting our own from. I would like to see each of you, you know, describe how do you end up next week with what you would like to see in this document? That way, it's really a draft document, we can adopt it at the next meeting.
And just to let you go, I did base this off of... I personally helped draft a document or rules of procedure for the city of Mont High where I used to be a city attorney. And so this is pulled from several cities, not specifically here, but or in this specific area or this county. But it is pulled from several cities, those items to be addressed. In regards to the rules of conduct that I included in here, many of the, much of this just mirrors the requirements in state law in regards to public interest in gifts. By including it in this document and including it in the ordinance, it makes those violations of state law, which are typically Class B and higher violations, it makes them also Class C, this kind of violation. So that's something to consider, but like I said, this is just a document for you to review and consider what a starting point for issues to address. And this is how to talk about rules of procedure.
Hi, Beth, did you have a specific date in mind you wanted to mark that requirement to get our stuff in? In the next week?
Yeah, next Friday, I think that is. Among this year, office need to work on this, our additions or contractions, you gave it back to us. For the seventy-two hours.
We need sufficient time. I mean, we can't get it seventy-two hours before the meeting with you guys. So I would say at least two weeks before the meeting.
So our first meeting people will revisit this. I think so. I'll make a motion to table this item until April. Y'all have your marching orders.
I will second.
I will also second to table this item until April. All in favor? Most curious?
I will advise, you know, everybody will probably have different requests and requirements for what they want to see in there. Our office is going to put in what we believe are what your request and requirements is most advisable for the city in terms of what the statutes require, how to improve, so we can have an open discussion about that.
Okay, it looks like the last item, but it's not. We have item eight, which I have here for the end. Discuss and consider for possible action, adopting a resolution confirming the mayor's hiring of interim city administrator James Privileg. I will say that he's already, we're going to work on the budget, which is something that needed to be started working on since it has to be done. So James?
Wait, do you have a contract in here that we can view? Or are you signing a contract with him?
I signed the interim contract. Contract.
Okay, so can we have a copy of that? So that we can see what we're agreeing to?
So as I stated before, state law does authorize the mayor to fill vacancies. And so he was authorized to fill that vacancy, force it in, or city administrator with interim, to enter into that contract, subject to the council approval, which is one of the...
I mean, he will work and sit in for the position.
I'll go ahead and go for a person. Give me a resume. And I don't believe I would seek any...
I believe I am...
I did receive one or two other resumes, but I didn't have what I considered to be required.
Can you please, I think you consider a requirement for a city administrator job? Can you tell me what your requirements for a city administrator job is?
Somebody that was qualified and working on qualifications to finish some module, was familiar with budgets, was familiar with hiring, contracts.
Can you expand on what you mean by qualifications?
The abilities to do all the things that are necessary to be a city administrator or work in a city like that. The ability to make a budget, the cost of budget, time is coming up, so... The ability to look at payrolls, jobs, city possibilities. How to make the city run after being closed down for two months.
James, did you have any of those items in your resume?
Yes.
I'll copy it.
I gave one to Roger, he can look at it after he goes in.
I'm going to go ahead and make this easy for you, for that, okay? I come in to the picture if you're really shortly after the city administrator position taken by David Wallace. For the record, I don't know any of them. Never have, never come across y'all until just the last couple of weeks. Matter of fact, point being, I don't really know anybody in City of God that's had a couple of fire chiefs because all the same fires must be out, they have been in years. I do have extensive experience in city management. Been in city services for many years. I retired in October, I had a fire chief, but I worked side by side with city administration for a long time as I was fire chief, running the city. And we just didn't have, okay, you have a fire chief, you have a police chief, we did all together, all the rules, all the statutes, all that stuff, the laws and everything. But I saw something happen here at the city. I am part of God, and I did not live here at the time. I am actually looking, John, we're not, I'm out, I'm actually looking to come about even with all that's going on in the world and all that. But with coming into this, I saw a city that needs help. I talked to several citizens, everybody's mad, everybody's upset, one way or the other, whatever, it's a mayor, it's a council, whatever. I see a big issue going on here, a big problem, and it's not getting any better right now. It's getting worse by the day, and I want to fix that. Excuse me, I want to help fix this for everybody, okay? Because it's going to take everybody to fix this. But I don't know what's going to happen. Because all I see is big name, Arden, you did this, you did that, et cetera. And I see very thick system, I see people from outside of God to come in here to defend God, you name it. And I saw something that I think, that I thought I could probably come in and help. And I think I can, I think I can, I think I can do what we need, and just place on the right track. But I don't think I'm going to have the support. And what I mean by support is full council support, full city administration support. So even though councilman and I talked tonight about, talked in the morning, I'm going to go ahead and make this easy for everybody. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask that this motion just dies of the lack of motion for now. And I'm going to encourage y'all, even though it was not done wrong, how I was appointed as to the head of, because I was appointed in her, and it was on to James Knight to go forward with it. Okay? So, but I'm going to step back and I'm going to recommend that y'all do open this up, y'all do give this position, especially this position, do it hard, and it needs to be done quick. It needs to be done real quick. It needs to be done real quick because there's things that the city administrator has to do. Starting just within a few weeks, couple of weeks, stuff like that, with the taxes, comptroller stuff, April first, this stuff starts rolling up. And it just comes quick from there on out. Deadlines, unemployment deadlines, unemployment stuff, taxes, revenues, everything. And if all this stuff is still going on until April, it's just going to further get worse. And y'all are just being so much hurt that you don't want to deal with this. So I think what will help right now if it's done quickly, and I hope it pleases the citizens, because that's who we're here for. We're here for everyone of these people. Citizens, councilmen, city, whatever, whatever. But I think it would be a minimal, some peace to let them know that this position, even as interim, was filled accordingly and that this place was done, or this position was done with due regard and the best version of it was still on this one. And so as of right now, I'm going to step back, if this, if God will allow this to die in the light of motion, I would gladly step back and wait for this big process to start and I will reevaluate. And I'm sure you'll get some qualified candidates, I hope to do, because a lot of people out there can do this job. But the only way to get somebody in this position qualified, not once they're is if all these people up here are getting along and doing this job together. This is a small town. It doesn't deserve at all what's going on here, okay? I've heard, I've heard it a lot, I've talked to a few. And it doesn't matter if therefore you, 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 it doesn't matter. They're all the same and it needs to be fixed. So I think, just to give them peace of mind and me, because I gotta, but I think if y'all can give this position due justice and go out and try to find a new city manager, interim or full-time, whichever, but give it the due process and let that version of it start on several things that we talked about tonight. That's why it needs to be done quickly, it needs to be done correctly, but it needs to be done quickly. I think that they just start, it needs to be, so we don't have any more support. Because this person here can handle a lot of this stuff going on. So with all due respect, I'm going to ask y'all to stop this die in the light of motion for now. And going to start on the first day of your term, go talk immediately on posting this job, finding this, finding the person. Are you me? And get somebody in here to help, start making this. But I pray with y'all, whatever it is that sticks, all of this stuff. Yes, there's a doubt is there, there's stuff that's going on that just can't stop right now. There's all this stuff with law and lawyers and all this stuff, that has to continue and that has to get fixed. But I was hoping March first, that stuff to be handled accordingly. When we start on the middle of it, just run this place, get this place going. But that's not going to happen right now until y'all get on the same page. And start, sometimes it's okay to agree with this, but y'all need to get together on this. And transparency is key, and I don't think that's a bad thing. So I'm encouraging y'all to start immediately, put this out, get this thing done. Get these people behind everybody, let's take the city, or y'all, whoever, take the city where it deserves to be. This isn't ours, this isn't for work, this is God. One of the best towns around. Again, I'm not a citizen here, I've been part of it one way or the other, I've been here my whole life. But it's a great town and y'all are really, really, really pleased with this state and stuff. So with that being said, I'll get back to y'all. But I would recommend again, if this dies in the light of motion, you know, start tomorrow, let the process get on. Either interim or full-time, whichever, probably everyone in full-time, but city, the question is here.
So I just want to say thank you. I really respect you and your decision. And I would like to see his resume as one of the ones that the interview.
So just for some legal considerations. The way that the interim administrator's contract was written, it terminates if not confirmed by the council. Or if a full-time city administrator is appointed. So if you, depending on what action you take today, if you take action not to confirm the mayor's hiring of the interim city administrator, specifically Mr. Purble, just to let you know what that will create is a vacancy in the office, the city office. Like I've stated probably three or four times today, when there's a vacancy in the office of city administrator, the law provides that the mayor has the authority to fill that vacancy with the council's approval or confirmation. So just to let you know, depending on what action you take today, if you take action that does not confirm the city administrator, which I'm hearing is what he's requesting, that will leave a vacancy, we're back at square one. Same law applies that the city, that the mayor has the authority under the state statute to appoint an interim to fill that vacancy with the council's approval or confirmation. But he has the authority under the law to enter into an agreement, to appoint a person, to enter into an agreement with that person and then bring it to the council after that. He has that ability. He doesn't have to get pre-approved, he has to get confirmation, which, which means that he gets, the council confirms his act after that.
So do you have a contract available to read to us?
I don't have it available with me now, but that is what it states. In terms of Mr. Purble's contract, it states that if his contract terminates if not confirmed.
So it has to be confirmed right now, right here, or it terminates. There's not the availability of, he will leave this item, we can bring that to it in two weeks when we have our next meeting. And allowing them to sit in that position until we do that?
The way it's worded is it terminates if not confirmed or a full-term, full-time person is.
So although I'm highly against what Casey did, I'm going to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming the mayor's hiring of interim city administrator James Purble. With direction that he is supposed to be permanent, position tomorrow.
That's not on the council's intention of consideration in terms of direction goes for a permit.
It's already been decided in the earlier year, didn't it?
I'm sorry?
It was already decided in the earlier year, didn't it?
But as this, as this item is posted, you are not to discuss or take any action in terms of posting or making any requirements regarding the posting of the city administrator, the full time.
Purble, do I have your word here, Davey? You can be in the morning.
I guess we can, why I would run up? I think.
If you're confirmed, will you be just be in the morning?
If I'm confirmed, absolutely. I don't want to do my job if I'm confirmed, but I'm asking that it was a simple.
Unfortunately, if this lived in back in January or February, we could have done that. We could have hired the agency back in February, remember it was on the agenda, but we didn't. So I'm going to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming the mayor's hiring of interim city administrator James Purble.
I second it.
I'm going to second. To confirm the hiring of James Purble, the city administrator. All in favor? Just pose.
Can you refer a phrase that can help? You didn't say anything. You just said, you just said?
For interim.
Yes.
Just to clarify the motion just second, and the item that you all voted on, that's to confirm the mayor's hiring of interim city administrator James Purble. Is that correct? Two seconds. Okay. So that being said, I mean, Mr. Purble, it's prerogative whether he wants to serve in that position or not. Like I said, I don't have a copy of the agreement, sir, but I don't know if you're, what the termination terms are in regards to your desire to continue. No. No, right now they've confirmed your hiring and your contract isn't, it's, your contract is to continue.
It's the, Daniel, go.
You know, we finally got off the legislation ahead. Took a while. Here we are, council, we have a queue, this is the one. Just simply use our. Took a forever. Mayor, send over the, 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 the gun.
Already down.
You got any else?
I motion to adjourn.
We need to send her next meeting.
I reject my request.
I'm right, I'm one of the workers that you're seeing this and I know what's going on. I want to handle it, they've always been, at least in two years, I've been here. I've looked up at it before, I've seen it, this is ridiculous.
So there are no future, uh, further items for consideration?
I have a motion to adjourn, have a second? Sorry, you got something?
It's not on the agenda, the second.
We have a registered meeting third Monday, February thirteenth, fifteenth of month, all of them.
So I have a question about that because our office has not been able to locate an ordinance or a resolution that states your regularly scheduled meeting. Is there one that can be provided to our office?
I believe it's.
We have a break.
Yes, here's your group. It's a group. If needed. If needed.
If there are agenda items. I believe it's on the twelve twelve meeting if I'm not mistaken.
Twelve twelve, yes. Well, in order to call a special, a special call meeting, you need to have it on your agenda now to call, to consider whether you're going to call a special call meeting. There's no agenda item on your current agenda that allows you to consider that. So the public hasn't been apprised of notice of that. I would go for, but that your next agenda or your next meeting be the first Tuesday of next month? Since that's a regular meeting, your ordinance currently states that the first Monday is your regular, at least, call meeting. So we need, our office needs something in writing state and give that there with alternative. I understand how it's always been, but it has to be set forward in writing. And so I haven't, our office hasn't seen anything other than what your ordinance states. So because there's not an agenda item on here to discuss calling a special call meeting on the third Tuesday of this month, you can't discuss that or take any action in regards to that today. I would say if that, if that is a normal thing that happens, then that needs to be on the agenda.
So all the meetings you've had in the past, the thirteenth of the month, or all the things that we voted on, it's all void because it's never been on the issue, we just always done, because it's hard for we done.
Well, you need to have, you can't take action unless it's on the agenda and you have, you have notified the public of what action you're taking and what you're considering. And calling a special call meeting is an actual. It's, it's a meeting, it's a special call meeting if needed. So, so. And again, we have not seen any documentation that states that. So if that can be provided to our office for clarification. Mayor, can that be provided to our office? Can that be provided to our office for clarification, what you write during the meeting? But as your agenda is posted tonight, there can be no action to be taken in regards to calling a meeting the third Tuesday.
It looks to me like it's standing there.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.